Here.
Paula Bertram.
Here.
Matthew Brenner.
Here.
I see you out there, Damon. Can you hear us?
Yep, I can hear you.
All right, great. Good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel and Facebook Live. This meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted remotely. The town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus and steps communities can take to prevent the spread. And all town facilities are currently closed to the public with the exception of pre-scheduled appointments. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 20, all public meetings are being conducted remotely. The order, which you can find posted on the Town Manager's website and the COVID-19 Information Center page, access to the Town Manager's webpage allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The short public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by Zoom video conference as posted on the town's website. Using an internet-enabled device, please go to the Zoom application or zoom.us and enter the meeting ID or call 888-475-4499. Again, 888-475-4499. And the meeting ID for tonight's meeting is 843-72266595. Once again, 843-72266595. Please note this is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware, everyone can see your screen. Anything you do will be recorded, and please take care not to screen share or share parts of your environment that you don't want recorded forever. So with that, I'll pass it on to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Good evening all, and thank you for calling us to order. Is there any public comment?
I do have a quick announcement.
Oh, Damon's got his hand up.
That's fine.
Oh, yes, please, Damon.
Hey, guys. So I talked to Adam briefly on the phone a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to reach out to you guys and see if you'd be interested in taking under advisement or maybe sponsoring a town meeting, a small zoning change. I was hoping to get on your agenda to talk about it specifically, but do you mind me running it by you now just to see if it's worth an agenda item? If you want to say maybe it's a good idea or tell me to get lost?
Sure, go ahead. Let's hear it. What you got?
Yeah, so the change would be to the setbacks and yards. So if anyone doesn't know, I'm an architect in town, and recently I've had a pair of different clients who were doing other work to their house ask about putting a front porch on the house. And they'd come from other towns and were surprised to see that we have a 40-foot setback here. So I was, this is something that also I had thought about for years, even from back when I was on the Planning Board, and just we never got around to it, too busy with marijuana zoning and all other things. But so the thought would be to allow for open-air front porches to encroach upon the 40-foot front setback. To allow, since we have so many kind of existing non-conforming lots in town, basically around all the lakes, Hickory Hills, Lake Shirley, all the small lots in Maylam, there's a lot of people who don't meet that 40 feet or are close and can't add anything onto the front of it. And additionally, there's the newer subdivisions that were built without the end user in mind. They're just trying to maximize, so they built right up to the 40-foot line and didn't care about architectural style or the end user who'd be owning the property. But I think there's a, I think there's a need of, or at least people in town who would benefit from being able to encroach upon that 40 feet. And I had written, my proposed change to the bylaw would just be an exception to say for residential zones A, B, and outlying, the front yard setback may be reduced by up to eight or 10 feet either one for the construction of an open-air front porch, front porch being inclusive of a floor, roof, columns, railing and associated steps. Any enclosure of the front porch with screens, windows, removable panels, full-height walls, et cetera, is prohibited within reduced setback dimension. So I think it would benefit just the community in general, because depth of space to the front of facades, make the streetscape more visually interesting, gives people a place to gather on the street side of things, or front porch conversations, a bunch of people passing by or in the pandemic world where you don't want to really invite people into the house. But just, you know what your thoughts were on that? If you're interested in taking under advisement or think it's a terrible idea, just let me know.
I think it's not a bad idea. A 40-foot setback is not uncommon in the area. And I mean, we particularly, specifically to Lunenburg, we've got a lot of houses that are already 10 to 15 feet off the road and well within the setback. So I mean, I like the idea. It's not going to help everybody, though.
Yeah, I know that. But yeah, so the people came from Lancaster and Ashburnham respectively, and they have Lancaster has a 30-foot setback, Ashburnham kind of got two residential zones, one of them's a 20-foot setback, Air has a 20 and a 35, Leominster has a 15 and a 20. So if you go like Townsend and Ashby, they have larger numbers, but it's not totally uncommon to get a little closer.
Well, I certainly think we're much more like Townsend and Ashby than Leominster and these other ones. But yeah, if we want, excuse me, put it on the agenda for some time and have some pre-thought to have a discussion, might not be a bad idea.
Thanks, appreciate it.
I would agree. I wouldn't be opposed to it. And I liked the stipulations that you put. I wouldn't be opposed if those porches get closed. But I like the idea of allowing people to have open-air porches, so I would definitely consider it.
Thanks.
Yep, Matt nodding his head, so.
Yep. I'm very, I'm very much in agreement. I would want to hear more about, I would also want to research and hear arguments for why we shouldn't as well, just because my gut is, sure, this makes sense, but I've learned to not always trust my gut in the matters of law.
Well, that brings up another interesting subject that I've, that I've read on a few occasions with other people, the setbacks. It's land that you own, that you pay taxes on, that you can't use. So in that regard, I think it's not a bad idea as well. But again, thank you for bringing that to us. And should, is there any specific time you would prefer or Adam would prefer to have it on an agenda?
I mean, I think if Damon were available at the next meeting, we have probably enough time. I think we'd have the one public hearing then.
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks, guys. We look forward to talking to you more about it.
Excellent. Thank you, Damon.
Thanks, Damon.
Have a good night.
You, too.
So I'm sorry, Adam. So what?
Nope, no problem.
I threw you off.
No, I, the screen share always moves.
Oh, there you go.
So I mentioned the last meeting that I had attended the Greenleaf Botanicals Community Meeting, and that it was not particularly well-attended and there were no questions. And it was communicated to me during that meeting that it wasn't actually recorded. I sat through about 15 minutes of PAC, tried to get it to record, so I thought they had been successful. The Town Managers reached out to them, and they have agreed to hold a second community meeting in order to work with the town as best they could. This will be hosted on the town's Zoom meeting, even though it is not the town's meeting. It's not the town's responsibility to schedule or host the meeting, but in order for it to be broadcast and recorded, that's the way that we're going to do it. So on March 10th, which is two weeks from Wednesday at 7:00 PM, there'll be a meeting with Greenleaf Botanicals by Zoom. The meeting ID number will be 828-407-41708. And this is the meeting notice. It will be posted on the town website. And I encourage anybody who has questions, comments, concerns, that they are perhaps not willing or able to share in a public forum, to email at info@greenleafbotanicals@gmail in order to pass those along, or potentially to attend the meeting and send their questions by chat if they are concerned about voicing questions, comments, concerns in a, in a public forum.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Adam. Did you say that it was going to be advertised in the ledger?
You know, I am, I just confirmed this today at about 5:00 with the Town Manager that she has gotten this scheduled with them. I'm not sure where they are proposing to advertise it. It will be posted on the town's calendar, as it had in the past. It had been posted Lunenburg Ledger previously, so I would anticipate that that is also where it will be posted again. But I, I have not spoken directly with Greenleaf myself, so I can't confirm that. I will look at that and I will let you all know.
Super. I don't know what their deadline is for print, but if that could get out this Friday or even next Friday, I think would work, right?
I mean, it would, ideally, it would be both. If not, having been this past Friday's paper, I, I didn't see that yet.
Super. What about, what about posting it at places that we don't, we're not required to post, but are public, like the post office or, I don't know, any, any other place that anybody can think of?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be happy to go and post this. Does the post office have a posting place?
I'm not sure they do, but you could stick it on the front door.
Just surreptitiously?
Why not? I'm sure, I'm sure they wouldn't mind. Well, you could certainly ask.
Nothing like posting federally illegal product on a federal building.
It's legalized. We made regulations for it. Okay.
Chair, while we're on the topic of Greenleaf, I had a quick question that kind of popped up. I went back and viewed the Selectmen's Meeting where they did a, they were discussing this public forum and so on. And the chairman, Mr. Alonso, asked if this had, and I'm kind of paraphrasing at this point, I didn't write down his actual question, but he had asked if this met all zoning requirements. And the answer was yes, but I don't, I don't understand how we get there in terms of how it relates to site plan approval and like how this whole process works. And my primary concern is, right next door to the building that they're planning to occupy was a single-family home, and I believe it's abandoned at this point. But I recall when we drafted those regulations, we created a 250-foot setback to any residential use. And so I just, I guess my concern is just making sure that we're following things in the right order here, not that this organization goes through all of the process at the state level only to find that they don't really meet zoning. So, and I would imagine we'd probably need to bring this up as an agenda item if we want to discuss it further, but it was just something that I kind of tripped over, so to speak, so.
Yeah, it's my understanding that that residential use has been abandoned for some time.
Correct, but it was still residential use. And so, I mean, people move in and out of houses at any point. Who knows what the future of that property is? Maybe the house gets torn down and something else goes in there, but there's another residence right across the street that's active.
Where across the street?
If you're facing Fallon Animal Clinic, it would be to the right.
With the pool in the front?
What's that?
The one to the right with the pool, the pool in the, in the front of the house?
Uh, I don't know if they have a pool or not.
It's next to the orthodontic office?
No. No. If you, if you're looking at Fallon Animal Clinic, which is next to Abisham's, so you have Abisham's, then you have Fallon, there's a house tucked up on the hill there, and then you have Dr. Flinkstrom Lunenburg.
See, I was thinking of Flinkstrom, not Fallon.
Yep.
Oh, up in the back, back between the two?
It's.
Fallon?
Between Fallon and Lunenburg Veterinary, which is Flinkstrom, there's a house that sits right between there. And I just recall, and this is more of a process question, right? Because we, they haven't come before us. And so we don't know if they meet the setback requirement, if they have enough parking spaces, square footage, security. I mean, there's so many things that are going to get wrapped up in site plan approval. And I just, I feel like based on the conversation that was had at the Board of Selectmen's Meeting, there seems to be this notion of, oh, yeah, it meets zoning. Okay, well, but how do we know that? Because we, we haven't really reviewed anything. So how do you, how do you answer a question that you don't have plans or anything else for? That's all.
Someone simply misspoke, Tanner. I believe that is the case. They haven't, like you said, come to Planning Board to get approved or reviewed even. So there are a number of things that you've touched upon that will come out in the site plan approval process.
Understood, but I feel like at this point, the town has represented to the applicant that they meet zoning.
I thought Tom asked the question, and the answer was replied by the applicant.
Okay, so where are they getting their information unless they're speaking out of turn, I guess?
I don't think it matters. They're not on trial. It's not, it's, it's just a, it's just a misspeak potentially.
Yeah. And I, I get it. I'm just trying to look at the process and say, if I was the applicant, and I'm going to the state, and I'm drawing plans, and I'm filling out applications, and I'm spending money on attorneys and hosting multiple meetings, if I'm not, if there's something critical here that we're overlooking, it, I feel like we owe it to them to flush something like that out. I mean, I'd feel awful if they came to us with a full package and, you know, got all their licenses and then get the rug pulled out from under them. I just, I think that's disrespectful to an applicant. And if I feel like I've tripped over something that doesn't quite make sense, I'm gonna let you know.
And I think that's, that's reasonable. And I mean, I can certainly pass that along to them.
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like at this point, they, they're moving forward under the assumption that everything is a green light on this end, and they might just have to do a couple of tweaks here or there. And I just, you know, I, I don't want them to go through a process and then find out that this specific location isn't going to work for them. That's all.
Very good. Good looking out. Is there any more public comment from the public, nonexistent or the board?
Well, that, that was more of a Greenleaf comment than a public comment.
We're still in public comment. We're not there yet, but we'll get there.
I actually, I guess I have a public comment and really a question. The, and a question for Adam. The Water District has, there was a vote of the Water District and residents to not expand the Water District to encompass the O'Brien project. Subsequent to that, the Water Commissioners are considering possibly allowing Mr. O'Brien to install a, some sort of water supply unit within the 500 feet that is in the Water District, and that potentially serving all of the residents of his development. It's still in discussion, but, but there's another meeting tomorrow to discuss that at 4:00 at the Water Commission Office. My question is, if that type of change goes forward, what does that do to the permit that's been issued by the Planning Board?
I don't think it does much, because the lots still exist. There may need to be a modification to include the water infrastructure in the approved plan. But if it's a matter of the plan is 122 lots in the configuration that was agreed upon in 2019, and the modification is installing a drinking water well and pipes.
It's, it's not a well. Apparently, it will be some sort of water tank and water supply system within the 500 feet that is owned, that is within the Water District.
Oh, and then, then that would feed the... And I mean, I guess it would, it would, it would be a modification in my understanding.
Okay.
I mean, that opens the whole public hearing process, but essentially, you would be reviewing the water system within the rights of way as it's changed.
Okay. Okay, but it would, it would open the public hearing process again?
That would be, that would be my initial answer. I'll have to look a little further into it. But that, normally, if there's a modification, it opens the public hearing process.
Okay.
Whether or not the installation of utilities, there's some specific workaround, I wouldn't think so, because that's infrastructure. It should be covered under the surety that is posted, whether it's the covenant or otherwise. And it would change the value of work in the public right-of-way or the potential public right-of-way. So that would need to be memorialized in some way. So there should be some manner of public hearing would be my, my initial answer, but let me look, let me look.
Okay.
And just make sure I'm not off.
All right, thank you.
Good. Thank you for that, Paula. I was unaware.
Yeah, it is, again, the meeting is, the second meeting is tomorrow at 4:00, no, not tomorrow, Wednesday at 4:00 at the Water Commission Office.
Thank you. Is it in person?
It's in person.
Interesting. All right. Any further public comment? Okay, then, well, off to the exciting minutes approval.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of February 8.
Second?
Excellent. Any further discussion about approving the minutes? Roll call, vote? Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mr. Cole? Oh, Mr. Cole?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you all. Committee reports. Stormwater Task Force still is not meeting. The Agricultural Commission, we have some, some good news. We have, last Thursday, so there wasn't enough time to get it on the agenda for tonight, but the Agricultural Commission has officially written a recommendation for appointment to the Economic Development Committee.
Oh, fantastic.
And I hear there was suspicion of an open space. Has that come around at all?
No, I actually have to follow up again, but I will.
Okay. So that was Mary Rae Holman. She is basically manager of the, oh, the feed store over at Paul's. Low places, sorry. So she'll need to fill out a talent bank form, and then we can put her on the agenda for an official appointment? Is that correct, Adam?
Uh, yeah, I don't, she can fill out a talent bank. She could, she could send a written request. The AGCOM, US Chair could say, we've met with this individual, and this is our recommendation, and we can put him on for the eighth as well.
Okay. Well, she's also an appointed member of the AGCOM.
Okay.
Super. So I'll let her know. Just an email?
Yeah, I think that would suffice.
Okay, beautiful. And, and then you'll let her know when she's on the agenda?
Yeah.
Perfect. Other than that, we had, we had discussion recently, I think it was the town of Ashby, there was a dog breeder, a person breeding dogs, and regardless of the breed. And the neighbors didn't like the fact they were breeding dogs, and she challenged them on the agricultural exemption and won. So now there's precedent set in the town of Ashby, I believe, again, I'm not sure, that breeding dogs is actually an agricultural adventure. What that would have to do with kennel fees and dog licensing and whatnot, I'm unaware of, unsure of, but, and on, on that same note, nationally, horses have been qualified as livestock, which previously they weren't. They were considered domestic and just Massachusetts hasn't accepted that yet, but on a national scale. Equine has been included in the livestock and that recent thing about dogs. So that was pretty much our meeting.
Mr. Chair, can I ask you a question about the agricultural exemption? Is that a specific section of law? Is it within our bylaw? Or where would I find out more information about what's that exemption?
The agricultural exemption is an exemption for the activity of farming, and it's Chapter 40, Section 3A, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
It's, I believe, the most recent update was to exclude cannabis and hemp from agricultural commodities.
Okay.
It's 40A, Section 3.
40A, Section 3.
You had all the right letters and numbers, just where the A was.
Great, thank you.
Yes, certainly. The TCP Building Design Committee, we had a meeting with just the members. We asked the, the engineer and architects not to be there. We were discussing amongst ourselves what position we felt we had, excuse me, for what we are obligated to do at the upcoming town meeting. It kind of went back and forth. We went pretty broadly off-topic, and I think we're not really sure. We're, we're trying to scramble, trying to get them to sharpen their pencils on that estimate. Again, it was, it was 21 million. They came back with, with a revised estimate of something a little over 18 million. And they, we, we were dubious as to what the, 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 uh... Part, part of the cuts were, were not clear to us why they were made. So we're going to ask them one more time, and then we're going to scramble around trying to figure out what we're going to present at town meeting. I'm pretty sure that $18 million to renovate the TCP, when it's already been shown to us that the costs of tear-down and rebuild are pretty close to the same, I don't think that's going to fly. But that was what we did at the last meeting of TCP. So open space ad hoc?
We met on the 16th, and we continue to look at land that is classified as general municipal, and we're really in the process of going through and researching. After we met with the tax collector, we understand that there's a two-process procedure that has to take place in order for land to become owned by the town. And a lot of the access codes list the town of Lunenburg as the owner, but in order for that to be in fact, to be fact, there needs to be a tax title certificate, and then it needs, it needs to go through the foreclosure process, and that also has to be recorded. So we're in the process of... So we're in the process of going through the records to determine what properties have actually completed the tax title process and are truly owned by the town of Lundberg. We're also looking at conservation. Bob Pease from the Conservation Commission is also a member of the Open Space Committee and he is going through all the Conservation Commission parcels to identify the deeds and what the restrictions were on all of those parcels. And if in fact they were, it stated in the gift or in the deed that it is for conservation purposes. So we're really doing a lot of research on properties, on general municipal land. The other thing is there are three parcels that are on Lake Shirley and we're investigating the history on those parcels. Actually, there may be more, but we're focusing really on three. Trying to find out whether or not public access is of interest and even a even a possibility. So once we finish that research, we'll be reaching out to other departments, the Planning Board, the Selectment, various parks, conservation, et cetera. With what we found and and find out how we move forward as a community, if we if we keep it just to, you know, without being on the tax rolls or if we repurpose it for a specific use. But that's really what our focus is. And that's really all we did at meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Capital Planning?
Uh, we haven't met since our last meeting.
Okay. MRPC Regional Plan?
Have not met since our last meeting.
And Joint Transportation Commission?
I I did end up missing the MJTC meeting, but I got them to send me a link for the video. Apparently the first time they have recorded it, so that was exciting and it worked even.
Wow.
Yeah. So not not a great deal that applies to us of consequence right now. The two things of note would be, again, I mentioned before that we have the bridge repair coming up on the current tip for 2021 and that is, we're just ahead of the curve of that and that we have, we're all set for advert for that to go out for advertising as needed. And none of the other communities are, so we're just, it's not like it's a race or a competition, but we're good, which is good to hear. And the other thing would be checking the notes real quick. Give me one. Oh. Just another call out. If there's projects that we want to get into the UPWP, let them know because there's often there's there's often room and maybe room in the next, if not this year, then the next year or two.
Very good. Excellent. Well, that rounds out our committee reports. Now we're on to workshop. What do we have for us, Adam?
We've got the same thing we had the last time around, the parking table and the definitions from the subdivision rules and regulations. I'll leave it to you folks what you want to start with.
So I thought we've pretty much wrapped up with the subdivision stuff, no?
We wrapped up with the submission stuff. This is definitions.
Oh, okay. I don't have my paperwork with me right now, so if anybody is ready to go ahead, I will be right back.
I had a question on, now I gotta find it. Hold on one second. On maximum extent practicable, why would they not be in complete compliance? There's a section in that definition.
These were written before we updated the stormwater bylaw, so that could probably come out. Because because MEP is gone from stormwater at this point.
Right, right.
Development requires additional.
Yeah, so I just didn't understand why we have that. Now, are we just focusing on the definitions?
That's that's what I I'm trying to do this section by section so that we're not all over the place. If you have something in section four that we missed, we can do that. I'm waiting for the board to help to get back to me before I send you an amended copy.
Hold on one second.
Or if there's something in other sections of the rules and regs that you that that exists that you see as problematic or you would like to change, feel free to to put together.
I do have some things I, you know me, I want to keep focusing on water and low impact development. Looking at your low impact development regulations that you had sent out a while ago, I'd like to incorporate some of that verbiage. I think it's, I think it's well worded. And I think, you know, the fact that they say these are the things you're going to do, recharge, for example, or and then if you don't do these things, explain to us why you're not doing them. I I really like that. And I'd like to incorporate it. I can set, I can, I'm happy to draft it, Adam, and I'll send you.
Yeah, I mean, you want to send me a list of stuff because that would probably fall into the next one I'll send out, maybe which is five, or it might fall into seven. I have to look at how I have it organized. I'm trying to remember where that falls, but
Okay.
So and with five, I'm just about done with my first my first, my first draft, my first public draft that I'm going to send to the internal departments for comment before it comes out to you because it's the, it's a lot of the road design and stuff like that. So the police, the fire and the DPW will will probably want to comment and there might be some things in there that they want to add or change.
Yeah, so it's really section five of the 5.2 of the regulations you had sent out in Westminster.
Okay.
That really is part of the project narrative and they have to explain how they're going to comply with limiting disturbance with open space, with runoff control, with recharge and reuse, how they're going to reduce impervious cover. And then if they're not able to do to to meet those, they have to explain why they're not going to. So if you go to the performance standards. So I just really like the way that they did it.
All right, I will work on getting that to incorporate in there. And let me look at the maximum extent practicable and whether or not there's a reason we would want to keep it if there's thing in the stormwater standards that would allow for an MEP outside of some of the other stuff that we have. If the stormwater handbook has areas where it allows for maximum extent practicable compliance.
Okay.
And then that way it at least defines how and why we would we would judge that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because the last bullet in that definition is not in full compliance with the applicable standards. They are, they are implementing the highest practicable level of stormwater management and I'm just not sure if they're standards that they have to comply with. I'm not sure why we would have that. So if you can just look at that.
Yeah. And my thought on that was something like a tight soil where an infiltration rate is this and based on the soils that are there, you can't infiltrate at that rate because the water just won't go through. And maybe I'm off on that and maybe it doesn't need to be there, but especially with the new standards. So I'll look at that.
Okay, that's all I had on the definition.
I only had one question on the definitions, which is super minor and even more curiosity. Why do we define acre? Because I I'm sure there's a reason.
It it never hurts to just be clear.
Okay.
Some some places call an acre 40,000 square feet. Just to simplify it and use a round number.
Yeah, so our zoning, we we go 40 and 80, which is the abbreviated acre. So, yeah.
You don't get called like a builder's acre or something?
Yeah, yeah.
Like that, yeah.
So I I picked up on the difference with our zoning and so I wasn't sure if that was the reason why or if it's just good practice, practice, as you said, and that makes sense to me.
And the question I did have for you folks is the type A and type B subdivisions. So I didn't change because there are times that I have seen something and been like, why do we do it this way? Let's change it. And been told, well, we've always done it that way. You can't change it. And so the type B subdivision requires a preliminary plan for all non-residential subdivisions or residential subdivisions with a lot size smaller than 80,000 square feet. Is that something that you would like to keep or would you like to residential and non-residential? It's under subdivision, comma, type A and subdivision, comma, type B?
I not only don't have the hard copy, I can't find the digital copy. Can you tell me when this was emailed out?
Sometime before the February 8 meeting.
It was set on
7, 6, 5, probably February 3rd or 4th.
It was sent on February 4th. The subject is eight Feb meeting materials.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Beautiful.
Why do we? Yeah, I don't understand why we have that.
Probably could have done this and made it easier. So I, you know, I completely understand defining streets as they are. I understand defining type A and type B subdivision, you know, as residential slash non-residential. Oh, and actually it looks like I did change it. So
Because that's not what it says. I was wondering why it only says residence B. So you changed it to be an outline.
And that's my my I don't want to say preference. That's what I think makes sense is not requiring a preliminary for a non-residential. Optional for someone to do that. The way we had it written, we were requiring a preliminary for residential. And I I don't know that that's necessary.
No, I would agree.
Yeah, I would agree too. There's a lot of this old stuff that we need to enough has changed that it's it's hard to gain the essence of the original intent of a lot of the stuff that's left.
I completely agree with that.
Okay.
I I'm not one to keep it because that's how we've always done it.
Yes.
But I I have received that comment on many things that I have. I don't see why we have this. Let's take it out. And and some I've convinced people that, you know what, he's right and some I haven't.
Yeah, no, you're not. You're not going to get a a negative response from me when you're saying, well, that's the way we've always done it. I I that's not a good excuse. Doing the wrong thing is just not the right idea. So i- unless anybody can find any reason why it is there or what it means, then I think that both of those subdivision type A and subdivision type B should be stricken. I don't know. I do have, I do have
Well, well, type A is residential and type B is non-residential.
Yeah, I I think they should be in there because I think that the street requirements for type B are different than for type A and that's the way I've been writing the design regs. Thicker pavement depths, wider requirements to accommodate truck traffic and more consistent car traffic. Whereas a residential subdivision is going to be classed by the number of houses or the number of annual adjusted daily traffic trips.
So what would be a non-residential subdivision, like a
An industrial park?
Industrial park, okay?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, business park, any anything that people aren't living at, but is is dividing land into additional parcels and a roadway.
All right, so we just had that, but it was through the A and R process. I can't, well, never say never.
I I mean, there's a significant amount of land down on Leominster Shirley Road that theoretically at some point could be divested by the owners and may present an opportunity for someone to create something like this. Especially if you were down towards the Fort Pond Road intersection. I mean, that's a a great shot right to Route 2. Very easy on and off. There's no reason that someone couldn't or wouldn't desire to develop a a park there. And again, I mean, we could be talking 50 years in the future, but you know, who knows how quickly the these will get updated again.
Oh, so I just figured out why I was confused, Adam. The the digital copy sent out on the 4th of February has totally different words under type B.
Yeah, which is what I don't understand because I opened this file from that email. Or maybe I did.
Type A has a different definition as well.
Yeah, and I I'm not sure why that is.
Yeah, and B has a completely different wording. Yeah.
Oh, not good.
No, that isn't good. Can you print it as a PDF and send it out again? Because I'm
I can do that.
Then you're working from.
Yeah, I'll I'll save it as a PDF and send it out in the morning.
All right.
And I think on the on the type A and type B, and correct me if I'm wrong, Adam, is whether or not a preliminary plan would be required on a type B and you're saying
Correct. I'm saying I think it should be on a B but not on an A.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, I understand it's it's okay. It's it's allowed to go directly to definitive subdivision for residential. It's not uncommon. It's not. It's not real common, but it's
No, it's it's, you know, it's both are common.
Well, I, okay.
It wouldn't preclude them from filing residential preliminary, but it wouldn't require them to.
All right, well, so in theory, I guess, I guess you're right. We do need the A and B to separate residential from non-residential. But now that we've had this nap, who I'm not real sure that we should be trudging forward.
Well, and I mean, this is this all, this whole document isn't being approved until we've gone through each section. And then we'll go through the whole document to make sure everything is where it should be. So we're we're not approving anything. We're not saying, yeah, it's good to go. We're we're going through each section and I'd like to get as many comments as we can out of the way. Put a second draft in front of you for each section. And when you say, okay, this looks good, we'll put it together as one whole document that includes all the sections. You'll look at that as a whole and then we'll schedule a public hearing and go from there.
Yeah, so I only, from the copy that I had, the only comment I had was about the maximum extent practicable.
Okay.
I I just would like to see, we, you know,
Yep.
Doubt, so. Because it looks very different than what we have.
Yeah, let me let me save this and and send it out first thing.
Okay.
I have one other question on it, actually.
Sure.
With apologies. Just on trees, and this wasn't a change you made, but I'm just looking at our definition for trees, comma, large, as 10 inches or more in caliper, four feet above the ground. My my understanding is that trees are typically measured at four and a half feet above the ground. I don't know how much that actually matters. And I even personally like the idea of large trees being easy. I like the idea of more trees being defined as large when in doubt it kind of being there. So but I don't know if that's something we should be trying to unify on a more of a federal standard. Or if that matters.
I mean, I've seen breast height, which is really from person to person. I don't know if Tanner has any insight on this. I think he probably has more tree knowledge than I do. But I I think you're right. Four, four and a half feet is usually pretty standard.
Yeah, the the DBH is diameter breast height and that's definitely a technical term, so.
I know the I know the, the people, I know the standard for measuring sugar maples, uh, which is my hobby. Is, uh, they, they, they tend to define now breast height is four and a half feet. And then. I just did some quick, very quick research that said that seems to be. Of like, that seems to be a standard. I'm not picky on this. I'm bringing it up for some, if it's, if it is something we care about. And if we don't, I'm fine with that.
Um, well, it plays in nicely. I mean, we've got, we've got what? Six inches or, or, or greater for the scenic road?
Correct.
So. I don't know. Should there be any correlation between large tree and scenic road? I don't know. Something to think about.
Okay.
Because as, as, as we said, the, the scenic road. Six inches or greater. Is a concern. So maybe we could bump that down to six inches of large.
Uh, I mean, I think the, the difference between the scenic road and this is. Uh, scenic road covers frontage for the lot on a scenic road. Um, the, the tree definition tied back to the previous rules and regulations. Uh, related to the tree plan, which was the area within the right of way to be cleared. And marking large trees. So you then create the potential for. Uh, a significant amount of more trees to be marked. Um. Not that that's necessarily good or bad. It just. That's, that's the, the. Reason the definition had been in there before.
Okay. Where does that put us?
Uh, in parking.
Parking.
So I have a couple of questions. Um, just a comment, accommodation is spelled wrong in a couple of places.
Of course it is.
Um. Multi-family dwelling. It's got 1.5 per dwelling unit with two or fewer bedrooms.
Mm hmm.
And then a single family home is two spaces per dwelling unit and two family detached and a townhouse are all two spaces. I'm wondering why on a multi-family dwelling, we're putting it at 1.5 rather than two per dwelling.
Um. With two or fewer bedrooms, uh, those tend to be. Uh. Multi-family dwellings tend to be more apartment blocks. There tend to be a, uh, smaller ratio of cars to apartments than there are to single family homes or townhouses. Which tend to have larger bedrooms, uh, and generally facilitate more parking needs.
And I guess I would disagree with that. Um, I think when you've got a townhouse, you know, and it doesn't specify bedrooms, a townhouse can be connected. Um, and, and you've got it just as defined as two spaces per dwelling unit. But yet with multi-family dwelling, you do it by bedroom. And, and I guess I would say if you've got two bedrooms, that typically means that you've got a couple and potentially a child. I don't think 1.5 spaces make sense personally.
Well, if that's the case, then we could take. Age three, four, five and six and combine them into one. And say two spaces per unit.
You could.
And that to me makes much more sense.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think that makes sense because a lot of the developments that begin with this idea of. Every development begins saying, we're going to attract old people and young professionals. And that's great until the. Frankly, until the old people start getting too old to live there and the young professionals start breeding. So. And then you have a development with kids.
Yeah. Exactly.
And then I have on section. Um. There's a couple of sections that I don't see the, the, the information. So 4.1 K, 4.1 K nine. You don't have it defined.
A nine, mixed use?
Yeah, just parking as.
Oh, that, that should be, there should be more there. Say per individual use. Because misuse is residence plus a use.
Okay, so, so it should say per individual use.
Correct.
Alright, and then motel accommodation is spelled wrong. Under 4.1 K 11, parking as required per what?
Uh, again, that's going to be per use.
Okay.
Cause in the office park, you could theoretically have something other than off.
Okay.
You might have a research facility or whatever else.
Yeah. Okay. And then 4.1 K 19 shopping centers, parking as required for what?
Per, per individual use. Cause a shopping center is, um. A collection of three or more. Commercial uses in a building 5,000 square feet or greater.
Okay.
So you'd again be tallying them by, by what's there.
I just, and that makes sense to me. I just didn't have.
Yeah, I must have done something with the formatting on those ones that it, it didn't pull it in.
Okay. So I didn't have any other comments.
Um, we did talk the last time about childcare. Uh, and rather than redo this whole thing and send it out, I, I just made some notes for myself. Uh, and I think my proposal would be. One parking space per employee on the largest shift. Plus one space. Per five children up to 20 and one space per chi, per 10 children over 20. So if you had 20 children, you'd have. Uh, four parking spaces. And then if you had 30 children, you'd have five parking spaces for the children plus parking spaces for. Each staff member on the larger shift.
Wait a minute, say that again.
So it's one space per employee on the largest shift.
Yeah.
Us, one space per five children up to 20 children. Plus one space per 10 children over 20 children.
Why would it scale down over 20 children? What's the logic there?
Uh. Oftentimes those are sibling, larger, tend to have sibling groups in large daycares. You're often not having. As many people at the same time. So you're, you're providing for additional parking without, um. Overtaking the entire space with parking. Uh, it's where, uh, you start with more parking for a smaller warehouse. And as the warehouse gets larger, the parking goes down because you're, you're storing, um. Your, your, your need for parking is lower because your, your square footage is being used differently.
But it's not going to work that way, Adam. It's not going to regulate itself. You get people on a confined lot, the lot doesn't get bigger as the people come.
But the building can only, is only going to be so big.
Okay. But I mean. Alright, is there a way that we could provide for queuing? Um, you know, stuff like, stuff like that is pickup, drop off typically, right? So can we, can we require that they have open adequate space for a?
Yeah, I mean, we, we could, we could even add a clause in there that says plus a designated drop off area.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned if everybody's dropping them off and picking them up at the same time, usually pretty much. I don't know. I don't have kids, but.
Uh. What age, does our childcare factor into a specific age group? Within our definitions?
It doesn't, only because the state doesn't.
Okay.
I mean, usually you see childcare facilities and the majority of them are going to be infant through like preschool. Uh, that's, that's really what you're. A, and that's not to say that there aren't, you know. There isn't someone doing childcare that counts as a daycare for the state that's doing elementary school children in the afternoon. Uh, normally you see, uh, childcare and it's, it's for the. Infant to, to preschool crap.
And we have schools defined separately, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, cause a school tends to follow more of a. Schedule.
Yes.
So in, in light of what you just, what was just said about the age groups, then they're less likely to be. Picking up and dropping off. They're most likely going to be parking and taking in, parking and going into trees. So I guess with that information, then I think more spaces is more important than, than like a queue.
Mm hmm.
But if, if it was, well, I don't know.
But a lot of the younger kid uses though, you don't have the same clustering. The, the, you still have clustering, but not the same tight clustering of, uh.
Yes.
Of pickup and drop, drop off times. You'll have more of a surge right when it opens and right when it closes. But you'll have a kind of a. A fatter tail of trickle in and a longer tail of trickle in and trickle out.
It, it's not, yes, it's not like, uh, an elementary school where everyone shows up at, at eight or five. Cause school starts at eight oh five. Uh. At least that's been my experience and, you know. And I'm not saying we would never get a large childcare, but I think most of what we're going to be dealing with are. Excuse me, what they call home childcare, which, uh, tends to be, you know, six children and under. Uh, tends to be within a home. Uh, and so you're looking at how to safely do this in a residential setting.
Well, I mean, we did have two, we still have one and, uh, Mrs. Crappies is no longer operating, I understand, but. You know, Bonjour is a large childcare.
Yes.
So I wouldn't say we wouldn't have anymore, but, um, I would agree with you. It trickles. I mean, when I used to drop off my kids, I, it was all staggered times. Um, and then with my grandchildren, again, it was staggered times.
And, and I mean, we have St. Boniface and we have Bonjour.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I would, I would put them analogous to each other. Um, St. Boniface has the benefit of the, the church parking lot. Accommodate its, its volume. Um, and Bonjour tends to have, you know, like, I don't think I've driven by there. Um. In my early day or early evening travels and seen the parking lot packed. Uh, but there certainly is a, a flow of cars. And I'm not to say that we wouldn't see them, but they, uh. I think we're more likely to see the, the whole, home daycare.
That, that kind of gets to my concern sort of here, and, and it may just not be a big enough concern to worry about is. I, I feel like the center-based daycare is more likely to have. Closer to this, it is more likely to hit surge capacity effectively on the parking. Than a home-based daycare, and I don't want to put. Undo regulations on people who are trying to run a, a legal daycare out of their house. Cause all that will do is turn it into an illegal daycare out of their house. Um. But I worry a little bit about giving. About having enough surge capacity for pickup and drop off for the center-based daycare. I don't know that that's really worth teasing out though, for that on the off chance that another one opens in town.
Well, then maybe we don't get the, um, the, the breakdown, uh, discount after 10 or 20.
Just one per five children.
Oh yeah, that makes sense.
That's fine.
That does make sense.
Cause you're not gonna, yeah.
Yeah, just take off the other one. Yeah.
One per employee on the largest shift plus one per five children.
Yeah. So.
We don't want to make it like three and a half children or something?
I'll let you decide who's got a half a kid.
Well, you see some of these other regulations. You had one and a half per unit.
So in a lot of the usage, you, you say one space per employee on the largest shift.
Mm hmm.
But then on others, you seem to say either two or, two or three employees. And I'm wondering why. So the majority of them say per, one space per employee on the largest shift. But hospital, bed and breakfast. And there was another one. I don't remember what the other, oh, and, and hotel is two or three employees. What's the rationale there?
The fact that, uh, potentially in those, those situations, um, either rapid transit or carpooling to. Uh, work for employees, uh, those places often have, uh. Hourly workers who. May or may not be making, um. Good wages and it may, uh, they tend to have a larger workforce. So the potential for alternative means of transportation, uh, tend to increase with the larger workforce.
Well, I mean, there's not a lot of alternative transportation here in Lunenburg, so I'm confused. I am concerned about.
We can, we can change that back to per employee. I don't think we're going to be getting, uh.
I don't think we're going to have to deal with.
Hotels or hospitals, but.
I think, I think we should change it back to the same which we've got for all the other uses.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, it, it's just a quick comment on the daycare. Um, parking requirements. I feel like some of this is gonna kind of regulate itself based on, um, licensing requirements from the state. And I don't know where the breakdowns are in terms of if you have so many kids, you're a home daycare and then you become a real daycare. But I feel like. Increasing the parking requirements. Uh, goes against two things that I think. Lunenburg would want to see. One is you, if you're running a home daycare and you're in a. A true home. You don't want to build out a bunch of parking because then it doesn't look like home daycare anymore. Then it looks like a primary school. Um, and the other thing is, I mean, a lot of the. Regulations that have been. Or things that have been loosened up around daycare, like the exemption from zoning requirements. Is aimed at trying to keep the cost of childcare down. Because there never seems to be enough childcare. And I, my concern is as we try to layer on more regulations, that's going against all of that. Um. So, um, not to give them a hall pass by any means, but I feel like. You know, just my experience with home daycares, it's always been. You know, like you're at somebody's single family home and there's a couple of extra parking spaces and they just kind of make it work versus. Building out, you know, a parking lot in these situations. So.
And my understanding of those regulations is that home daycare tops out around 10.
Mm hmm.
So you're, you're talking two parking spaces and maybe a, a third. Um. Because the, the, obviously the homeowner is working at the home daycare. Uh, and so if they, they bring in another employee, um. You know, you're, you're talking four spaces. Uh. And if the homeowner is there, uh. Well, let me, let me work on this and, and maybe we, we parse childcare between home daycare and center daycare. Uh, cause homeowners is, is, is not traveling and they're already have, they already have a parking space at their home for their vehicle as required.
I would, I don't know that that's going to prove necessary basically for what you said, Adam. Uh, home daycare does max out at, under typical circumstances, home daycare does max out at 10 kids and two, um, adults.
Okay.
So we'd be talking about four parking spaces under these regulations. One for the homeowner. Who would probably have the car there anyway. One for the likely outside adult who's employed. Uh, and then two for the parents. Which I think, I think Tanner, that matches roughly what you're describing. And that matches what I've seen at, um, like when my kids were in daycare in Fitchburg, in a home daycare in Fitchburg too.
Yeah, I just, it, it was more of a general comment. Like, I know we were talking about like, uh, queue zone, like. Loading and so on. And I just, I, I'd like us to avoid a situation where it's, oh, well, now you need to have a driveway that's double wide. So one vehicle can exit and one vehicle can enter and so on. Um, just in keeping with the spirit of a small town and. Um, just in keeping with the spirit of a small town and more of a residential feel, that's all.
So. And maybe that queue zone comes into play during site plan approval for a larger daycare where it, it appears to present that type of issue.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
I'm gonna jump in and play devil's advocate. Um, if your house is big enough to have more than ten kids, then it should be big enough to have more than five cars in the driveway, I would think. And so some of these houses might be on shared driveways and in excess, excessive parking or queuing or people just leaving their vehicles in places could disrupt that second home off of that shared driveway.
My knowledge on the licensing for home daycares is about eight years old from when I was researching it. Uh, because I did look into opening one at one point and um they do max, if I remember correctly, they do max at ten kids. That, that, then you have to go for a different licensing for the center-based daycare. As opposed to a, the home daycare license is easier to obtain out of a uh standard home where, where the larger, more than ten kids is much harder to get out of a standard home. So I don't know that we're likely to see a bigger scenario.
Oh, sure, and I, I wouldn't disagree with you, but I, I just wanted to, to make it clear, my understanding or where I come from when I'm, when I'm doing this stuff and I think about, wow, that kind of stinks, that's kind of excessive. Well, the zoning bylaws are to protect the entire town, everybody in the town. Now, if you're going to have your own private house in a residential setting and you're going to decide to make a business out of it and run a business, then I don't think it's unreasonable to have uh extra requirements to protect the other residences around you that haven't decided to make a business out of their home. So that's when I, and I do a lot. I have to remind myself that a lot because I don't like regulation. I really don't. I think that we should be able to do what we want pretty much with what we've got and that's not the case, just because it's a civilized society and, and everybody has to work together and some people are more ambitious uh than others and houses turn into uh businesses. So I, I think it's the houses that stay houses and, and have families that the zoning protects against others that, that don't. So I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask somebody to put in an extra space or two if they're gonna have a, a business next door. Uh, just to make sure that it doesn't interrupt everybody else around them that doesn't have a business that's just living in their home. If that makes sense, I, I hope. Okay. But I don't, uh, I, I don't think that one space per five kids is unreasonable.
Now, my question is, does the board want to try and put this on for the spring town meeting or do you want to carry it to fall?
What's the disadvantage? And I mean, if we're, have something we're getting pretty comfy with, what's the disadvantage in uh going for spring as opposed to fall? Because fall would be a special.
Yeah, fall would be special.
It's always a special, okay.
Um, really what it is, is the warrant closes in three-ish weeks. So what we would have to do is I, I can take this and distill it down into uh a more legible and easier to use table, combining uses that have the same parking requirements into individual uh columns. So it's, it's going to look a lot different than this. It's going to look more like what I had sent out uh the first time around. Uh, and, and the board would have to look at it and say, yep, looks good. Uh, and have to schedule a public hearing, but that doesn't need to be done prior to uh the item being placed on the warrant. That just has to be done prior to town meeting. So we have plenty of time to do all of that if that's the board's purview. Or the board's desire.
Personally, I'm against doing zoning articles at special town meeting. I think it makes sense to do them at, at the Maytown meeting. Um, because I think it's more widely attended. Um, that's just my thought process.
I concur with that. Um, I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable. I mean, we, we've added a whole bunch of new stuff here and um just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with it and had enough time to set it, set with it.
That's why I asked the question that way. Uh, I don't want to, I don't want it to feel like I'm rushing you to get this to town meeting in the spring so we can push it through. Uh, but it's something that we've certainly come up against and said, hey, our parking calculations are really crummy. Let's, let's fix them. Uh, but I, I also don't want the board to be uncomfortable that we're, we're trying to rush anything.
When does the warrant close?
Uh, I want to say it's March fifteenth at four P M.
So that's after our next meeting?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think we should put it on our next meeting. You're gonna clean up the table a little bit, right? Um, and then let's just have a final vote at our next, next meeting, that would be my, but this is just for the parking, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
That sounds reasonable.
So I'll have something out to you guys next week.
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, so if uh, if we're good with that till that, our next meeting, then um, then we're back to Greenleaf.
Uh, I mean, I kind of kind of gave you my update already. That's, you know, they're holding the, the second community outage meeting on March tenth. Uh, it will be by Zoom. It will be on the towns. The town Zoom account, so it'll be able to be broadcast and recorded by Public Access Cable Committee.
Good.
I expect you'll see something very similar to what was done the last time around. Uh, I guess my hope would be that uh folks who are uh concerned, who have questions, who uh want their voice to be heard for or against, uh will show up and participate.
And this is nothing more, I'm just reminding myself, this is nothing more than a big old discussion. There's no nothing else comes out of it other than they say what they're planning on doing and people say, I like it or I don't and it's I mean, I don't mean, I don't mean to put down on what it is, but it's a, it's a lot of words in the air without a formal conclusion thereafter.
That's correct. It, it's the opportunity for folks against this, for this, um indifferent to ask any questions they may about the proprietors, the product, the type of uh facility, um, you know, how it will be operated. Uh, if there are things that people are concerned about or they feel uh would be positive or negative ancillary effects of this use that the selectmen can address through the host community agreement or something to that matter. This would be the opportunity to air those so that uh the potential operator and the board of selectmen are aware. Uh, and as they move forward with the host community agreement negotiations, they can address any of those issues. Uh, and you know, I, I stated last time that the selectmen were working on the host community agreement. I uh apologize if that was uh misinterpreted. Uh, they have met with the uh proponent. They have seen the host community agreement. They have made some comments on it. They have not finalized nor have they signed anything. Um, they're working through their comments and, and questions about it.
That's what I remember you saying.
Okay, I just, I wanted to be, to be clear about where they were.
Very good. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. I- in the spirit of trying to encourage the public to say anything rather than the stone silence that is the nonparticipation in the last meeting. Is it uh inappropriate to effectively to sh- share the meeting info and the Zoom link on the, some of the local Facebook groups? Because that's where a lot of people communicate.
I, I don't think that's inappropriate at all. I, I don't personally do Facebook, so it's not something I have the, the capability. Uh, I don't, I mean, it's, it's a public meeting and anybody and everybody is, is welcome to attend.
Yep.
No, I, I'd like to clarify uh something for, for my own and, and also for Matt. Uh, the um, we don't expect to have that on our agenda upcoming, so.
No, not that I'm aware of.
So if he posts that, then he's more than able to discuss.
I will never tell anybody that they can't discuss anything. I would always caution that regardless of how you preface and gauge your comments, you are a member of the planning board. Uh, and some folks will always view you as a member of the planning board and anything that comes out of your mouth, they may interpret as your opinion as a member of the planning board. Um, that's not to say, I mean, everyone is always entitled to their own opinions. Nobody can take away your free speech. You are an elected official. So there's really nothing anyone can do to sanction you other than vote you out. Uh, but a- as long as you're not discussing intimate details of an opinion or uh cavorting with other members of the board outside of the meeting that might constitute open meeting law. I mean, your personal opinions are, are your personal ones. And you're right, it's not a, a matter in front of us now. It is a matter that will be in front of us and um, I would just caution that any prejudicial comments could openly the opportunity for a, a future proponent to uh raise an issue with an individual's vote.
And I, I should clarify then that my thought was simply to put it, to put it out there and say that effectively if you have feelings for this, if you have feelings against this, this is, this is your opportunity to engage to engage in what's happening in your town and be part of the democracy.
Yeah, I mean, that, and, and I, that's what I took you to say, that, that's, there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. That's an informational thing.
Yeah.
When someone asks me a question like that, I feel the need to just put the caution out there.
I appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you. That's why I mentioned it, why I brought it up. Um. So is that all we have to discuss about that?
That is.
Okay, nobody has any more questions? All right, our meeting schedule, six thirty P M, remote participation until further notice. We have two items. March eighth, we have the hearing for the rules and regulations for site plan approval and special permits.
This is the erasure of the reduced size copies for the board and the introduction of full-size copies. So you guys can all be doing this on Zoom while you look.
Right. And then the next meeting, we'll have a hearing for North End Subaru.
That is correct. Pretty significant project.
Excellent. Um, so ongoing items?
Uh, I'm just the rules and regs uh for the, for the plan submission.
Which we're gonna have a hearing on next meeting.
That's correct.
Beautiful. I think that run its course on our ongoing items then. Nice. Um, all right, I, public comment. I think it's just the six of us.
That it is.
Board comment. Questions, concerns? I'll pause for Tanner.
Yeah, I, I guess I have a quick concern. One is when it comes to making a statement in the public as a member of any board. I'm of the mindset that, yes, you are an elected official and you hold the position and people may pay more attention to you for that. But at the end of the day, as long as you're not representing your opinion as the opinion of the planning board, go ahead and say whatever you want to say to whoever you want to say it, because that's democracy.
I, I agree with you. I
So I don't think it's appropriate to caution anybody or scare anybody into oh, your vote's gonna get negated because you said something. I'm of the mindset that as long as you say, I'm Tanner Cole and this is my opinion and don't represent it as I'm a member of the planning board, you should participate. I mean, we hear this at every meeting, oh, fill out your talent thing form, come and comment. And then the rhetoric is just be careful what you say because it might get you in hot water and those are two polar opposites.
I apologize if that's the, the tone that I, I put out. That was not my intent. Uh, I just, I have seen board members in other communities say prejudicial things that uh compromised them at future hearings.
Making everybody aware. Um, okay. I guess we're um, I guess we're at the point where I would take a motion to adjourn. Unless, unless anyone else has anything else they'd like to say or ask or comment.
No, motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, no discussion about adjourning. We'll do it by roll call. Mrs. Bertram?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
At seven fifty-eight.
And I for myself at seven fifty-eight. Thank you, Adam. Thank you all. And uh have some pleasant time in between the next meeting.
All right.
Have a good evening, everybody.